It is six o'clock on the button here, December 2nd, 2025. This is a regular meeting of the common council of the city of Oneonta. And we'll get this show rolling if you'll call it roll.
Mayor Drinick?
Here.
Councilmember Moser Campoli?
Here.
Councilmember Walsh Russo?
Here.
Councilmember McHugh?
Here.
Councilmember Lapari Shu? Councilmember Carson?
Here.
Councilmember Harrington?
Here.
Councilmember Forrester Rothbart?
Here.
Councilmember Matheson?
Yes.
Okay, so join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, folks. And we are going to open the floor to our petitioners. And I will ask, as I do every time we get together, that you make your way to the podium, that you let us know who you are and where you live. And if you can contain your remarks to three minutes, that would be much appreciated. Who would like to speak?
Jim Forbes, we want to tell the Congress earlier than you know. So far, we've heard from doctors, past airport managers, residents, and several licensed engineers about stormwater, water quality, and environmental protection. It's also been made aware that there will be additional economic impact to the area to part of the city's borders, although we have vital businesses, seasonal impact is already here. Likewise, hospitals, including helicopters, committed to emergency, not airplanes, airplanes must its long distance flight. This proposed project is only in the common detention, and Apple people can afford $20,000 annual membership to ride the air drone. Sales pitch you heard about airports and economic impact has been illustrated by comparing our area to Saratoga, Pinkerton, and New York. That's an apples to oranges comparison. Let me remind you of the profile put forth by Chief practice's team to take the foothills for Kone Yard Center. It was completely out of line and faulty. Within a few years, foothills required private drivers just to keep the doors open. Those of us who remember urban renewal also remember how it decimated downtown businesses. Today's council needs to get relevant information, not conjure numbers and sales data put forward by the commission. Where any down path ultimately leads to environmental destruction, another municipal factory, and compromises in drinking water, probably from the origin of season and forever chemicals like PFAS traveling near half my land or resident. I'm a longtime taxpaying goat. I'm also one of the neighbors greatly affected by your future decisions. I hope you consider the quality of life that we have here in the area before you go too far along merely chasing the almighty dollar of low-reach seasonal food. If you ask the right questions, what we receive, there's no reason to expand my life or enact a new company. How many of you have actually taken a driver's stroll down V. George or Airport Road? You'll notice the photography doesn't let itself well to railway extension. The airport commission answered one of our questions several months ago with, "I don't know. I only have the 1969 published article 77." That's a good illustration of what you're dealing with. Your consultants from Passero, four FAA representatives, rarely short to any council meetings or commission meetings. Let me quickly read the resulting research, which can be found in multiple publications, including FAA documents. The role of the 34-1 slope in Moynihan use. 34-1 slope is an obstacle identification service used in the design instrument approach procedures. It's a standard, not a variant. The slope is standard used to evaluate potential obstacles in your plant approach path. It helps determine if the approach is safe for use in rural, indoor conditions. Penetrations are allowed, but not penalized. If an object, like a tree or building penetrates this imaginary surface, which is not automatically in the object, must be removed via an internal main. Instead, the approach is so is penalized, typically by requiring higher visibility minimum for pilots. For example, visibility requirement might increase from one half mile to three quarter mile. Those explanations are from accurate search of some of the issues at stake. However, it's foggy here in New York depending on the season. It rains often. We have snow. How is the commission going to change the weather? These are the questions you should ask your consultants to help create an environmental disaster that could cost your water quality, increase the city's financial burden, and create another debacle like urban renewal. Is this a lot coordinated by Oneonta Airport? City can't afford or upgrade or maintain its water and sewer services. Building and more complexity to the system is not the answer.
Thank you, Jim. Have anybody else who'd like to speak? Randy?
I'm a radio marital, 1170, California's road. I'm just here in opposition of the funding of any more capital improvement projects at the airport. I just, we've talked about putting the brakes on some of this stuff. And I think that's a wise decision to pump the brakes on this until, I mean, I think maybe to have engineers who are not being paid by the city to sell you stuff might be a good way to start. I mean, Passero was here to sell you jobs. That's what keeps them, you know, keeps them alive as a company. You know, the 10 cents a gallon you get for fuel, I don't know that that's really worth it. I mean, Matt could tell you more, I guess, about where that stands. It doesn't seem like the liability of having what you have up there, the 10 cents a gallon, is not going to look up for something happens with the fuel, with some sort of leak. And I understand that it's all being upgraded and all that, and that's great. But that doesn't mean it's a failsafe forever. This whole project, I think, it just, we've said it before, beating a dead horse. This is to benefit a few people. This, I mean, keep telling this, it's not about expansion, it's about safety. That's horseshit. Everything I read is expand the runway. It's add parallel taxiway. It's build a new road so we can build new hangars. That is expansion. So I'm just here to, in my voice, my opposition to the further funding of any of these capital projects.
Thank you, Randy. And I know, as you'll be speaking again in these months to come, if you can just watch the language. Appreciate that.
Do my best.
Appreciate that. Who else do we have that'd like to speak? All right, seeing no other hands, we'll close the petitioner section. And correspondence has been supplied to all of our council members, is that right? And so, as it's quite lengthy, I think we can dispense with that. All the council members are invited to please read what's been provided and... Greg, who do we have to speak on behalf of the airport commission here that we talked about?
I believe it's Commissioner Peter.
Okay. Len, is this something that you're able to speak to? The rates and fees, is that...
The information was sent to the council, right?
It was.
I guess I could take any questions.
Yeah, why don't we go that route? As it lays on to the airport, you're the most appropriate person to field any questions if there's any council member that has a question.
I'm actually on the commission.
Oh, yes, there you go.
If anybody has any questions, one moment.
Yeah, I'm so sorry. Would you introduce yourself to everybody?
Certainly. My name's Isaiah Gibbs. New politician, I'm on a career change. I have experience with FAA, worked with them for ten years. I'm an airport staff, so I'm obviously not very good at public speaking. But if you guys have any questions about these fees, I might have to ask or answer.
I appreciate that, Isaiah. I'm throwing you right into the breeze here, aren't we? Does anybody actually have a question relative to that information that was, as Len pointed out, provided? If not, then we're going to say, "I appreciate your valor," you know? They appreciate your stepping up and thank you again for your volunteerism on the airport commission. We'll move to our committee reports then, our Quality of Life and Infrastructure Committee report. And of course, Scott, if you would.
Uh, yeah. Thank you, Mayor. We met on the 24th of November. Passed our two sets of minutes because we'd like to do it before. We talked about parking regulations on Market Street, up about James, Jurgen's and Ave. About changes in there. That's not going to be on this agenda, this agenda, it's going to be on the next one or that coming up. Talking with Greg and stuff, we wanted to try to make sure we have everything together so it all comes in one shot versus piecemeal. And then we talked about the Market Street parking lot, parking time limits. There's going to be a roll of 24 hours. Greg, I'm going to screw this up. There's a roll of 24 hours, and then the rest of it's going to be in contingent with what we got with four hours. To try to make it so it's friendly to the public so they know. And that's a start. We're going to go from there, and then we're going to fine tune if we have to. Like every other lot, like during winter, like we have now with snow, those regulations will be lifted so we get cars off the street. And then the last part was watershed logging came back down to us. And I just want to remind everybody that our committee meetings aren't necessarily always open to the public, public comment. We try to do that. But when disrespect happens in a meeting, it won't be tolerated. So we adjourned with the disrespect that was going on in the meeting with people calling out, speaking out of turn about the watershed. And as far as the committee was concerned with the watershed logging and stuff is, the committee spoke, or the council has spoken, and it should, that's where it should stay if anybody wants to do anything about it because it has to be the council overturn the decision that was already made, so.
Questions or comments?
I just wanted to mention, this is a little bit of an addendum to the tree discussion, tree management discussion that the Climate Smart Communities, which met after the Quality of Life Committee, we discussed the possibility of taking up as a task force the tree management plan that had been put before us as a council sometime this past summer, fall. And so, I just wanted to add that, that there, that the ongoing discussion about tree management is something that the Climate Smart Communities Task Force is interested in further discussion around.
As we had discussed, I do see, in speaking with Kathy Pollard, the chair of the Environmental Board, I do see kind of a coordinated conversation that happens between those two committees and obviously the city. Anything further for Scott? All right, thank you very much, Scott, I appreciate it. And Cecilia, the Finance and HR Committee, please?
So we met just before our council meeting last Tuesday, and we reviewed the personnel manual, both the updates and then the employee salaries. And we also approved the wage schedule, part-time wage schedule for 2026. And we looked at the cooperative purchasing agreement, and I believe we have something related to that today. We have a sheet that was given to us. Yeah, I don't know if Greg and you want to, is this related to our discussion?
That's, I think that's been laid, I think that's something that'll be...
Right. Thank you. And so, we also approved having the SPCA be the continuing dog control service provider. And then we ended by placing both funding capital improvement projects for the airport on the discussion agenda.
Very good. All right, questions or comments for Cecilia in the Finance and HR Committee? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much. And we are going to move right into our approval of warrants with motion number one, that the common council approves the warrants totaling $184,536.22 and the same be placed on the finance director's desk for payment as presented. Do I have a motion to approve? I've got Scott followed by Len and...
Councilmember Moser Campoli?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh Russo?
Aye.
Councilmember McHugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Lapari Shu?
Aye.
Councilmember Carson?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Forrester Rothbart?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheson?
Yes.
Okay. Typically, if anybody had something to pull from consent, they would have informed us. But we'll nonetheless let folks know. Yes, Scott?
I don't want to pull it because I have a conflict. I'm just going to abstain from the consent agenda.
Okay.
Then we can just go through the way it is.
All right.
I'd actually, sorry, I'd actually like to pull the motions seven and eight, please.
Seven and eight.
Thanks, I apologize. I was on the fence about it, but...
Neither does the conflict.
Yeah.
All right. So the consent agenda minus motions seven and eight, which will move to discussion. But prior to our calling for the vote, I do want to shout out to Andrew Petolo, who, again, volunteers what makes this government work as much as anything else. And so, we thank him for re-upping for the Public Arts Commission and call the roll. No, we don't, I'm sorry. You're right. Okay, so consent being consent.
I need a motion.
I need a motion, I'm sorry.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, thank you.
Second.
I'm still new to this, right? All right, we've got, followed by Don, I've got, I appreciate that.
Excluding seven and eight, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Minus seven and eight, all right. So we'll take ourselves to the city administrators' report?
No.
No.
You have to vote.
Oh, for God's sake.
Hi.
Thank you. Sorry. Please.
I blame Len.
Councilmember Moser Campoli?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh Russo?
Aye.
Councilmember McHugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Lapari Shu?
Aye.
Councilmember Carson?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington?
Yep.
Councilmember Forrester Rothbart?
Yes.
Councilmember Matheson?
Yes.
Just about done, guys. All right, moving on to our city administrators.
You have to go back to seven.
No, I'll take those to discussion.
You're going to do it later?
We'll take them to discussion.
Okay.
I will happily take questions from councilmen. I didn't prepare a report.
Questions? Yes, Katie?
I don't really have a question. I just wanted to say that today I took a very snowy walk and saw the new railing in the Westcott Lot retaining wall. And it looks, I don't know how long it's been finished for, but it looks really beautiful. I think I was thrilled, so just wanted to share that.
Right here, in a few, maybe a week, a year or less.
Cecilia?
I have a question about the roundabout. The, there's a last portion that is still to be completed, is that correct? Is there any idea in terms of end of the year, is that still full for January 1st?
Yeah, that's the last, the last stuff that is shared is the last one. Now, I heard there was garden guide real being delivered the other day. I'm not sure what they've done the last few days. I haven't walked over to look or heard any updates, so hopefully moves along. I can explain it here.
Yeah.
In line with the roundabout, I feel like we need to put out a PSA because people are just like not stopping. They're driving straight through, they're rushing around the circle. No one's using a blinker, like it's kind of mayhem at times. And I do think part of it is like due to when they were doing the construction, people were just allowed to bust that yield and keep going because there was no other oncoming traffic. Now there's oncoming traffic. And so, I think we maybe need to put out a PSA about using roundabouts.
We can look at something like that. I think, I know there's videos already, and then we might build a...
Yeah.
Reference people to give the, make sure.
Look to your left. No, that's, has to look to your left. If somebody's in the traffic circle, yield. That's, it's simple.
We'll get it.
Anyway.
I feel good about it.
Yeah, anybody else? Don?
I think that the city did a very good job finding the snow today. Has always become way too much snow. But other than that, it's a great job.
Anybody else with a question or a comment for Greg?
Okay. I'll just say in terms of my remarks, keeping them extremely short. I've had an opportunity to be out on the street documenting a lot of the things. I didn't wind up putting up the Westcott Lot fence post just because there's been so much. And for every 100 people who thinks something's great, it's the invitation to somebody to go crazy. So I haven't, but it looks great. There's just a lot of wonderful things that are coming to fruition right now in the city. The transit hub looks great. It was great to see, actually, I guess, I presume, college students that were waiting for the bus outside. They liked being outside as much as they liked to be in the inside. Very cool to see the space being used like that. It's a very accommodating, very welcoming space. I think once we get into spring and those planters start to really come into their own in terms of, you know, the shrubbery, it'll be beautiful. The Christmas tree, I just happened to be in the right spot at the right time to see the tree being planted, as it were. The nice thing about the reconstruction of Mueller Plaza is that the tree had a home to slid right into. And the lights, I feel confident in saying they will work. The lights on Santa's Cottage, and some folks may know that I've had some history with Santa's Cottage, have always been a, you know, maybe they'll work, maybe they won't, maybe they'll work for a little while. They're all working, everything looks great. So we just have a lot of nice things happening when you, when you take a wander around, you know, Main Street and Market Street, it just feels like we're doing some things right. And hopefully, that combines with this Christmas spirit to be infectious enough that people come down and shop. Our merchants really, really, really need support right now. And though they didn't have the best Small Business Saturday that they could have, some folks did, many did not. So talking to you guys who are hopefully going to either stream this or however they wind up watching, please come downtown on Saturday especially. We have so many things going on. We have the parade at 3:30 on Saturday. There'll be an opportunity for people to bring their non-perishable foods. And there'll be folks with shopping carts in the parade to fill those shopping carts with food items. All of that will be donated to the Veterans Outreach Center, who've been doing an amazing job with, you know, feeding anybody that wants to come in. There'll be all kinds of entertainment throughout. You've got the Hello Dolly being performed by the Orpheus Singers in Mueller Plaza. And of course, the Christmas tree lighting, there's a lot going on. So please, come downtown, especially on Saturday, and shop. Even little things make a difference, right? So anyway, so that's it for me.
Yes.
There's two things also on Saturday.
Yes.
At 4:30, the children's library will have Santa.
Yeah.
And then on Monday, the children's library officially opens.
Yeah, and how wonderful to have that children's library right there on Diet Street. Yeah, it's very cool. All right, so that's all I have. And then what I'd like to do is go to our motion seven as the first in our discussion agenda. Motion that the common council adopts the amended City of Oneonta Administrative Personnel Manual, which stipulates employment terms, conditions, and benefits for all full-time employees of the city not represented by a bargaining unit effective January 1, 2026, as presented. Do I have motion to approve? I've got Elaine, I've got Len, and Katie, you pulled this?
Yep, I don't have any discussion. I just wanted to consider it individually.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Is there any discussion? All right, minus discussion, I think we can call the vote. I think I've got this down now.
Councilmember Moser Campoli?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh Russo?
Aye.
Councilmember McHugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Lapari Shu?
No.
Councilmember Carson?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington?
Staying.
Councilmember Forrester Rothbart?
Yes.
Councilmember Matheson?
Yes.
All right, thank you. And now, motion number eight, that the common council approves the annual total salary for employees covered by the 2026 Administrative Personnel Manual effective January 1, 2026, as presented. Do I have motion to approve? I've got Don, I've got Elaine, and Katie, because you pulled it. She has no discussion. Is there a discussion among other council members? Seeing none, we call the vote.
Councilmember Moser Campoli?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh Russo?
Aye.
Councilmember McHugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Lapari Shu?
No.
Councilmember Carson?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington? Councilmember Forrester Rothbart?
Yes.
Councilmember Matheson?
Yes.
All right. Fix us to motion number 14. Motion that the common council adopts the local law, which would amend certain provisions of the City of Oneonta's municipal code, chapter 236, entitled Sewers, which would set the sewer rates for the 2026 calendar year. This local law was laid electronically on November 14, 2025. Do I have a motion to approve? Don followed by Len, discussion?
So I understand that this was on last, last kind of council meeting. There was a little discussion around that. I was just wondering, I apologize if I couldn't make it. I had a family commitment, but is there, what was the concern moving forward with this?
Well, we had two votes no, but either one of the council members that did vote no want to address that?
Yeah, because I, my stance is, is we're doing a hefty tax increase on the general budget that I don't think that, between the general budget that we're doing and the counties is going to go up and the states is going to go up, and everybody, with everything else, the prices are going up. I just don't think that it's right to raise this at the same time as we're doing that. So I figured, my stance was one or the other, and I'm more supportive of the budget with the hefty increase this year than I am this. We've been going along and raising these last four or five years, which was the plan. And so, I think that, you know, taking a step back for one year isn't going to set us far back.
Right.
So that was my stance, and the people are my, you know, my word on fixing companies and stuff, so.
Thank you.
I just, I am okay with adjusting the rates, but I kept saying last year, last week, but it's actually this year, what we're doing right now. We had adjusted the schedule to have the first step be a lower increase and then have it increase as you went up, but the amount that increased also went up. And that was not given any consideration this year, but that is what I'm in favor of. So I'm not in favor of it as it stands, for the same reason as Scott. You know, I think knowing that the majority of our customers are in that first step, you know, five or $10 is a lot, a lot more, I think, to put on that many people as opposed to, you know, people who are using over 3 million gallons a year. I mean, I say people, it's mostly, you know, entities. But, but yeah, so I think that's a way to alleviate some of the pressure. And it was revenue neutral or slightly positive.
More positive.
That's the projection, so I don't see why we wouldn't do it again this year. I have not heard a compelling case for that, other than, you know, it's just not what's recommended. So that's my reason for dissent.
Was there, was there any other discussion about the water worth presentation? We, I know that I have been asking for it all of '25. I know I've asked for it at least three different times in council meetings. So do we know where the water worth presentation, because the sewer and the water, to me, water in, water out, is kind of the concept that I always had on this. When you say water worth presentation, are you talking about revised rate structure? Yeah, we were going to go through this presentation. We had talked about it in the second quarter, then again in the third quarter. Right, that's unfortunately another one of those things that we just have knocked out to get in workload and staffing issues, but. So that kind of helps me, Greg, in looking at the future. I mean, it's great that we're cash positive in '25 through our water and sewer because we're there, but to Scott's point, there's, there's concern similar to the mayor. I have taken a lot of complaints on, on Market Street. When is the parking lot going to be open, but Market Street itself? So I feel some of your pain that you get, but I also hear about this water and sewer. So I guess I'm not against putting a clause on this for a year. And then let's take a look at that presentation and really kind of address it out for us. I was really hopeful that we were going to see it in the second quarter, but I understand you guys are smart.
Jenny?
Len, one of the budget meetings where you were not there, we handed out a graph of the water worth presentation. And in that graph, we had done several years through the rate. If these rates, you know, improve, then we'll have to disstructure the budget. Probably have to use fund balance because we will not have the funds to cover. But in that water worth presentation graph, we went over the projection for a number of years. And we emphasized there that we had, I'm going to maybe quote about 68 miles of water infrastructure that we need to fund in the future. And the goal of the rate structure is to be able to support operations and also future infrastructure. Right now, we have over 51% of our customers provide, only hitting the first step on the table. And they're only providing 555,000 of over a $3.5 million budget. And I stress that there's a small number of customers that are providing 45% of the budget. So trying to adjust the rates accordingly. The reason that I suggested that the first... The reason that I suggested that the first three steps go up ten percent this year and the rest of the steps go up two percent is because the rest of the steps, their bills went up over twenty-five percent this year. And I thought that was a big enough increase from twenty-four to twenty-five. And when, then, and also at that budget meeting, it was discussed that we were not going to change the rate structure until the Tyler conversion was completed. And in that presentation of the graph, we showed how the cash flow was going to go up, and it's not until the mid-two thousand thirties where we hit the price we really need for our cash flow. To be, and our goal is to be able to invest three million dollars per year in replacing infrastructure. Chris expressed that it's two million, tell me if I'm wrong, Greg, he needs two million dollars per mile of replacing the water mains. So, he's looking to do a mile to two miles every year. And that's how, that's why we're trying to get the rate structures in place to be able to reach that goal, to be able to fund the repairs that we need to do. As you know, a lot of the infrastructure is over a hundred years old. And we have been postponing a progressive plan of getting the infrastructure replaced. This is what we've been trying to do the past five years, four years, of getting the rate structures moving at a slow and steady pace so we can build it up by the mid-thirties so we can be able to plan on doing those infrastructures. We're also doing the same thing with the sewer. And the sewer, again, it doesn't have as many miles, I think it might be fifteen to twenty miles less of sewer, secondary sewers, that we have to replace. And Chris expressed at the last meeting that the INI is becoming an issue, especially when we have large storms. So, there is a tremendous amount of work that needs to be done to secure the safety of our water and our sewer systems. And I gave you, I sent out comparisons after the last meeting where it failed, and I showed you the comparisons between twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six. And I urgently, you know, strongly urge the council to support this plan going forward because if you don't, the ask is just going to get larger as time goes on. I've tried to emphasize that as much as I can, and doing it by a slow and steady mark. It lets the customer absorb it at a slower pace, but it also lets us build our funds up as time goes on.
So.
If we don't do it, we're just gonna have more water breaks, and you're just going to be procrastinating the eventual meeting. And then, we've had some municipalities this year have increased their water and sewer rates forty, fifty percent because all of a sudden they found out that they, they had all of these repairs they had to do. And that came from a New York State meeting that Alan attended, which I think he reported to council.
Right. So, Ginny, before I go to Shannon, and then Cecilia, and then Katie, in that order. If we do not pass this motion, it's been laid since, laid in November fourteen, it would require our going back into the budget itself, would it not?
Yeah, well, it's going to, for the sewer fund, it's going to require going, changing the budget. It's also going to require, and here, correct me if I'm wrong, we're gonna have to lay a new local law, and then we're going to have to time it to hopefully get it effective by January first.
Very tight timeframe to try to pull this together.
I would defer to David, but my understanding is the way that the rates are established, it's established from that point in time forward until changed.
It's a local law.
So, if we don't change the rates tonight or any immediate vote, it would stay as they are in the current law.
Which would still nonetheless impact the budget?
The budget, yes.
And so, having that impacting the budget, what are our next steps to ensure that we land where we need to within our mandated timeframe relative to the budget?
Well, I, David, I'm sorry, I did not understand that explanation. If they do not pass, if they do not pass this local law tonight.
Well, let's do it, do it the other way around.
Okay.
Last year, we passed, we passed a local law changing the rates.
Yes.
The local law does not terminate on the thirty-first.
No, I understand that.
It's a local law that stays in effect. If there is no local law to change it, then the current local law remains in effect, so the next year's rates will be the same as they currently are unless it was changed by local law.
Correct, but to be able to raise more funds, the rate table would have to be modified in a different way that the council would find acceptable.
Correct.
And then that would require a new local law.
It would.
That's what I'm saying.
In order for the budget to be.
Change water rates by, via local law.
Unaffected.
But, yes.
In order for the budget to be unaffected.
I understand.
You'd, in order for the budget to be unaffected, you'd have to modify the mechanics in order to be able to get the same, that same line essentially in the budget?
Yes, if, if, if this is not passed, then we, we have to modify the sewer budget. So, I'll, we would need to lower, we don't raise the rates, we would need to lower the revenues that we have put in the budget and then appropriate fund balance. That would be the easiest way to do it. If you want to restructure the rates, then we would have to lay the local law. And again, modify the budget.
And again, it's December second. Let me go to Shannon.
Now, I'm gonna, she answered a question.
Okay, Cecilia, the pleasure.
I was just gonna mention, because Chris isn't here tonight, what I found compelling about his statements from last meeting had to do with raw sewage and the potential for raw sewage during a massive storm without adequate infrastructure to leak into our freshwater source. And I think that is really what got me very concerned about the kind of, the long-term effects. And nobody, nobody I know on this council wants to raise rates. However, I also am deeply concerned about the quality of our infrastructure and the longevity of it, especially as he noted, as Chris noted, we're averaging six to twelve water main breaks a year. These are significant infrastructure problems, both current and then potential future concerns. And so, I just wanna emphasize that, that for me, as he noted also, it's just increasingly difficult to fulfill the obligation that we have, which is to provide clean water and adequate sewer.
Kate?
Thank you. So, one thing that still doesn't make sense to me between our discussion last time and this time is the correlation or the assertion that we're deferring necessary infrastructure improvements, but we are seeing the revenue from the different struc, the different rate structure that we need. So, I don't, I'm having a hard time understanding why continuing that rate structure would be likened to, or, you know, would insinuate that that would be detrimental to our infrastructure needs if the revenue is being realized. But then the other thing is, and I think I know where you're gonna go with it, but I would like to understand that. And then the other thing is, you know, you were saying, Ginny, that the highest users on the table saw their rates increased twenty-five percent, but on the, on the sheet that you've provided us with the changes from twenty-four through proposed twenty-six, it's in the, from twenty-four to twenty-five, it was thirteen percent. So, maybe I'm interpreting the table incorrectly, and I'm just hoping that you could also address that.
I'll answer both questions. The reason why we need to have the rates go up is because we are still not generating the revenues that we need for everything that needs to get done in the future. And the, that is why I suggested over the years, we go slow instead. Because, again, I don't want to hit the customer with a large increase and then also not fund our needs in the future. So, I hope that answers your first question. We are, we are still not generating the revenue that we need. Our revenues did go up, but I don't want them to stagnate because they need to continue to go up because we've got many expenditures in the future that we have to pay for. And then, yes, the bills went up twenty-five percent. That is because many of the large users, they go over the three million dollar, or three million number of consumption. That compounds, so it compounds, you have, you have to remember that they have to go through all of the steps. So, when they go through all of the steps, it compounds on top of each other. So, even though the rates only changed by thirteen percent, the compounding of going from one to maybe the second step, that all gets added together.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay, Elaine?
Yeah, I just wanna speak in favor of, you know, my support for the rates as presented. And I also share concerns with the environment, and I think, you know, I'd like to point out that we have, in addition to hearing, you know, from folks about the concerns that they have over increasing fees, you know, we've also heard from a number of folks this year about concerns with the environment, you know, with the logging projects, with the airport projects and everything. And this is yet another extension of something where we can make an impact that could be positive on our infrastructure here. So, the one we're talking about right now is sewers, of course. But I think, you know, we really studied this very, a lot, all year. You know, we had Department of Public Works come in and do a two-hour presentation for the Budget Review Committee over the summer. The day after we voted this down, there was a water main break. You know, it's kind of struck me, you know, as something that, you know, we should pay attention to because each of those water emergencies costs us more than it does to plan to replace that infrastructure in the future. The other thing that costs us more as we go along, if we are not increasing these costs incrementally as we go, it's going to end up costing a bigger chunk, you know, in the future for customers, and I would rather take a slow and steady approach because I recognize that this is, you know, something that is going to impact people's budgets, and I would rather do that at a steady pace for folks. And, you know, the table that we have right now does have steps already built into it, I, you know, so I think that that's something that we do already have reflected in here. Oh, and what I was gonna say about the increased costs too, is, one of the other things is the longer we wait to do these things, it always costs more because we have inflation and as well as those emergency expenses. So, I think we should also remember the city comparison that we looked at as we went through the budget process, which showed us that comparatively, Oneonta's water rates are very low compared to most municipalities.
Okay, if we have no more discussion, I think we can call the vote.
Councilmember Moser Campoli?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh Russo?
Yes.
Councilmember McHugh? Can we table, no.
No.
I cannot ask, okay. I. Councilmember LaPari Shu?
No.
Councilmember Carson?
No.
Councilmember Harrington?
No.
Councilmember Forrester Rothbart?
Yes.
Councilmember Matheson?
Yes.
All right, takes us to motion number fifteen. Common Council adopts the following scheduled water rates to be effective January one, twenty twenty-six, as presented, as you see on your agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? I've got Elaine, followed by Don, and discussion? No discussion, we can take a vote.
Councilmember Moser Campoli?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh Russo?
Yes.
Councilmember McHugh?
Aye.
Councilmember LaPari Shu?
No.
Councilmember Carson?
No.
Councilmember Harrington?
No.
Councilmember Forrester Rothbart?
Yes.
Councilmember Matheson?
Yes.
All right, takes us to motion number sixteen. Motion that the Common Council approves the following resolution. Whereas the Common Council of the City of Oneonta met at time and place on November twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, as specified in the notice of public hearing, to receive comments concerning the city's twenty twenty-six tentative budget and heard all persons desiring to be heard thereon. And whereas the Common Council of the City of Oneonta makes no changes to the twenty twenty-six tentative budget as approved on November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, now therefore be it resolved that the twenty twenty-six tentative budget, as presented on November eighteenth, is here, twenty twenty-five is hereby adopted and shall be effective as of January one, twenty twenty-six. Do I have a motion to approve? I've got Len, followed by Michael, and discussion, Katie?
Yeah, I'm not sure that this is possible now that the motion has been read, but I would like to, and I don't have the codes in front of me, but I would like to, oh gosh, decrease the contingency and increase the, or also decrease the general fund expenditure amount by fifty thousand dollars.
You're, are you talking, you want, you want to reduce the appropriate fund balance?
Correct.
That's exactly what I'm thinking.
Thank you, Ginny. This is a result of the increased tax levy. We agreed to a tax levy that was slightly higher than what we had appropriated, whatever that expenditure was that we had, oh, is this the insurance, the cyber insurance? Yes, and there was a remaining fifty thousand dollars, which was.
Remaining twenty.
Oh, it was twenty-five? Okay, I'm sorry, I thought it was fifty. So, then I'd like to amend my amendment to twenty-five. But that was put into the, okay, can I finish? Thank you. But that was put into the contingency rather than decreasing the appropriated fund balance, and I, I'm not in favor of that, so.
So, I have to ask.
In order to vote for the budget.
David, so we have a motion on the, on the table? And then here's a different motion within the context of a motion that's on the table. How does that work?
I, I, I do not believe that there is an opportunity to amend, to amend the motion after, there's a, there's, we're in discussion.
Right.
Now, either for or against, and I don't know if any amendment for, amending, amending the motion.
Having screwed up the consent agenda, I really did want another opinion.
Unless, well, you know, as you know, we sometimes, we sometimes authorize a friendly amendment where there's, where there's no controversy. But there is no procedural mechanism to amend a motion in the middle of a motion during a discussion period.
I don't think so. Elaine?
No, that's all right, I just wanted to get an explanation, that's why I was raising my hand to be called as next.
Sure, sure. Don?
I was, I wanna, you know, sometimes I wanna look at the big picture. So, the earlier budget that I had in my file was from twenty twenty-three, and the budget was twenty-five, twenty-eight million dollars. And the budget that we're gonna vote on today, I believe, is thirty-two point nine, which is an increase of nine point eight percent from the previous year. When I was looking at the four-year change, so it's from twenty twenty-three to the proposed budget for twenty twenty-six, it's up seven point one million dollars, which is a twenty-one point six percent increase in four years. So, I think we've spent a lot of money, and the amount of money that we're spending is increasing. We have a stagnant economy and a declining population. I don't see how we can spend thirty-two point nine million dollars.
All the more reason for the Budget Review Committee to continue on into twenty twenty-six. But relative to this motion. Further, Elaine?
Yeah, I think relative to this motion and to the Budget Review Committee, if, you know, if that work is to continue next year, it seems to me like a review of the budget process would really be helpful for a lot of, you know, for everybody, so.
I think that's probably true. Uh, Ginny?
May I make a suggestion for Katie's concern?
Yes, of course.
And Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, you could vote on this motion, and then Katie could propose a motion to amend the twenty-six budget.
Yeah, that'll work.
Then you could, you could do it in two separate steps.
Yeah, that'll work, sure, nice job. Okay, Scott?
Our attorney, I'm looking at your policies that are there, the thing that you gave us from the procedure, and it says amend a motion, somebody can move to amend a motion, and they just need the majority to do it. So, if this is a motion, we could amend the motion as it's in front of us, correct? Or am I not understanding what you were saying?
The, if, if there's a motion and it's, and it is made and is seconded, then if there's, if there's a motion to amend, the question is, how do you get the motion to amend in the, as part of the discussion? You would have to, you would have to move to amend, and that would take you out of the, that would take you out of the process.
Okay.
So.
That's, I was trying to follow you, I just wasn't. So, so, so Scott's question notwithstanding, it sounds like Ginny actually came up with a, a pretty good way for us to get to Katie's amended motion by virtue of, we vote on this and then we can talk about what Katie would like to do with that. So, I think that makes some sort of sense. Mike?
Question for Shannon, I just, could you clarify what, I mean, based on our votes on fourteen to fifteen, and fifteen, what that effect is exactly on sixteen? I mean, I, that if we are passing the tentative budget as it is, I guess, I don't know, I look for and I couldn't find what the shortfall would be between if we had passed the sewer rates and didn't, like?
I'm sorry, I don't understand your question.
I'm just, it's okay, it's, I, you can wait.
Okay. All right. I feel like we've exhausted discussion here. We can probably have the vote, and I think then we'll revisit Katie's, uh, potential amended motion. All right? So let's call the vote.
Councilmember Moser Campoli?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh Russo?
Yes.
Councilmember McHugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Lapari Shu?
Aye.
Councilmember Carson?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Forrester Rothberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Matheson?
No.
Okay. So, following, following that, Katie, can you kind of phrase this so we might be able to turn it into a motion?
Sure. I would like to make the motion that we amend the 2026 budget as adopted to decrease the contingency appropriation and also decrease the appropriated fund balance by twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay. Do I have a second? I've got Lynn seconding it. Okay. And discussion on this motion? Do we have discussion? Do you want to be more clarifying, maybe? Can you explain the rationale, maybe?
Yeah. That's, I would like more information, please. Sure. I mean, Jenny, do you wanna, do you wanna expand on the impact that that would have? I mean, I could talk to my probation about it, but I think it would be more practical to hear what that means.
So what happened after, after the result of the previous meeting for the tentative budget, the, it was approved to add twenty-five thousand in, into the budget for cybersecurity insurance. And to fund that, after a little bit of a discussion, the council approved that doing a three hundred thousand dollar tax levy, that they would do a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar tax levy. And then there were a couple of changes that were funded in different ways. But then I had found, after I modified everything that had gotten cut from the budget, there was, and then I had found an error that needed correcting, which was about twenty-nine hundred dollars for one of the decisions in the code enforcement office. What I did is I put the difference, which wasn't quite twenty-five thousand, but I put the difference into contingency. So the contingency ended up being a hundred and ninety-five thousand, nine hundred instead of the two hundred thousand that was originally in the, um, code enforcement. So it was, so it was just a net effect. As a result of that one meeting, I added two hundred and fifty thousand. I received no direction. I should have asked the question, that was on the other day, I didn't ask the question. I received no direction on what to do with the excess fund, and I just left it in contingency, knowing how much it got cut from all of the different cuts that we had done, thinking that you were probably going to need it in the future anyway. So that's why I, I didn't reach out to ask if everybody wanted me to reduce it or not, knowing the number of cuts that you already made.
So, yeah, so you all, I'm sure, were for, like, seven-hour meeting where we went through, we added a bunch of things, we took a bunch of things out. Contingency was one of those things at the request of Jenny. Jenny, she had asked if we could make it an even two hundred thousand, and we were in favor of that, but then we cut everything else. And then we added cybersecurity back, but for me, contingency was at the bottom of the list of priorities when we were reviewing all of those additional topics. And so I, I appreciate that the, in hindsight, you know, that that could have been further discussed. I don't think contingency is the place for that additional twenty-five thousand dollars. The reason being is that we treat the fun, the fund balance as our savings accounts, but if contingency is in the budget, it's a lot easier to spend that way. I think we kind of try to treat the fund balance with kid gloves. I think we've all been reticent to appropriate as much as we have from the fund balance. And so I think that if we have an opportunity to, if we have an opportunity to decrease the amount of the fund balance that we're appropriating to the 2026 budget, we should take it. Especially like when we were having that seven-hour discussion, it was, I think the contingency budget in the draft budget that was presented was like a hundred and seventy-five?
Forty, one seventy-three, five hundred.
Yeah, and we increased it to two hundred, but what we had, what we had decided on prior to that was one hundred and seventy-three, five hundred. So, you know, to bring it up to one ninety-six, I just don't, contingency is like, maybe we'll spend it. We don't really know what we're gonna need it for, and of course, things happen, but I don't think that that should be our default when we have quote-unquote "extra" money, because it's really coming from our savings. So I'd like for us to keep it there.
So just for clarification, because I don't have this written down, so the, the amendment is, is to move the twenty-five thousand from contingency instead in, have that in fund balance? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Or, yeah, thank you.
Further discussion? Don?
Why does it matter? I don't understand the change. Why, why would it matter? It's still, it's still this same same amount of money.
I'm not sure I can reiterate it any differently, but basically, like, we're trying not to spend our fund balance, right? That's our whole thing, is that we needed to appropriate fund balance to balance the budget. None of us likes it. It's too much money. It's almost two million dollars. So there was quote-unquote, and I'm totally just like ad hoc here, we had twenty-five thousand dollars in found money, and so rather than putting that back into our fund balance, we wrote, we kept the budget, oh, this will resonate with you, we kept the budget at the same size instead of saving it and reducing the budget by twenty-five thousand dollars. And so I would like to reduce the budget by twenty-five thousand dollars and put that money into our savings account and plan not to spend it. Okay.
Elaine?
Yeah, I'm just, I, I, I'd have to go back into my notes, you know, I, because I didn't anticipate this, but I remember when we were going through that budget, you know, in the seven-hour meeting, there were several things that we took out that we said, oh, we'll do that under contingency, we'll put that under contingency. And I, I, I would really like the opportunity to go back and, and look at that again as well. So, because I don't even think, a lot of that fell under stuff that was DPW, so I don't think we have, oh, you have, thank you.
Yeah, it was salt.
Yeah. Yeah, it was a lot of...
Don?
Can you table this and take it up when we have more time to think about it? Would that be okay with you, Katie?
I guess so. I mean, I brought it up two weeks ago and was told that I couldn't make the motion, so I came today prepared to make the motion. Now here we are again. Okay.
If that's, council is up.
Can I ask a couple questions? I've kind of lost here. Was, there, there, there's been a motion, was there a second?
Yes.
Okay. We're in discussion now.
Yes.
Yes.
If you wanna make a motion to table, you can make a motion to table where you, and that has to be voted on.
Okay.
So if that's what you're doing, do it.
Mayor, could you hold, like, council and see if it's...
No, 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 no. You have to, you have to make a motion or not make a motion. Either make a motion to table or don't make a motion to table.
I make a motion to table it.
Do we need a second? Do we not?
We need a second.
Yeah, do I have a second? Elaine? All right.
Councilmember Moser Campoli?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh Russo?
Yes.
Councilmember McHugh?
No.
Councilmember Lapari Shu?
No.
Councilmember Carson?
No.
Councilmember Harrington?
No.
Councilmember Forrester Rothberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Matheson?
Yes.
So, sorry. I'm sorry, but I'm gonna go with Katie, let it, let this thing play out right now. Let's get to a vote on it.
Thank you.
We can always re-tap it. Doesn't have to, you know, people need to explore the question.
All right, further discussion? Yes, Jenny?
Had I asked that money, this is, this is the question I want the council to answer. If I had asked that night, what to do with the extra money, how would I have been instructed? Would I have been instructed to add it back into contingency, or would I have been instructed to reduce fund balance? I think that's the question that you need to ask yourself, and, and then advise me. It was my fault that I didn't ask, so I apologize. But because there were so many cuts, you know, we cut salt, we cut the rental, we do, 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 things like that. So, so just think about how you would have instructed me that night, and then...
The ski park, Jenny. Uh, look, it's, it's no one's fault. There's no fault here. There's a lot of moving parts, so.
And, and just remember that if you vote no or yes tonight, you have future votes that you can consider for what you change need to come up.
Right. So getting the money from one spot to another.
All right, so, let's, let's just, okay. Do we have any further discussion?
Oh, actually, no, I did just wanna say something. So I, I also think that it's worth noting that all of that list of priorities of the things that we brought back, or things that council brought back after staff made the reductions. So, like, I know we talked with Chris Yacucci about the salts, and, you know, on the day of a huge snowstorm, you know, we're thinking about salts, it's all happening. He had mentioned, he, like, you all had initially cut that money for salts, and he had mentioned that he purposely overbudgeted, overbudgeted for salt, but that it would probably be fine. You know, we had mentioned that we would potentially rely on the contingency, but ultimately, like, if we do need to appropriate general fund balance at some point, we can do that as well. So it's, yeah, like, like Shannon was saying, we're just moving it from one, one place to the other, but in my mind, one is a little bit more protected than the other. And so in that moment, Jenny, I would have said, yeah, please decrease the appropriated fund balance, obviously. I may be the only one, but to me, that seems prudent. So that's the, that's the position I have.
And when we're ready to give it to the ski park or public art commission, we can just move it over. It's really no...
That's right.
All right, so with that, I see no further discussion. I see Mike's hand.
Just one question for you. I'm looking at your memo from November fourth.
Yes.
Where it says increase contingency twenty-six thousand, five hundred. So that's the, we would take twenty-five thousand, but the, we didn't mention it.
Yes, yes, we had increased it to twenty-six, five. But then, but then when we made all of the cuts on the next meeting, we then decided to set them a three hundred thousand dollar levy, we were gonna do three hundred and fifty thousand by funding twenty-five thousand for cyber insurance. That left twenty-five thousand.
Got it. Okay.
We can take a, we can take a vote.
Councilmember Moser Campoli?
No.
Councilmember Walsh Russo?
No.
Councilmember McHugh?
Yes.
Councilmember Lapari Shu?
Aye.
Councilmember Carson?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Forrester Rothberg?
No.
Councilmember Matheson?
Yes.
Passes.
Okay. All right. So that, that was motion sixteen B, I guess. Moving on to motion seventeen, that the Common Council approves the following resolution. And note, there was a technical error here, so I'll be modifying in my next paragraph, okay? From what you have in front of you. Whereas the Common Council has adopted the budget for the 2026 fiscal year, and whereas real property taxes in the amount of five million, nine hundred and six thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars for the general purposes, and six hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars for library purposes are necessary, as ascertained by such budgets. And a water and sewer rents re-levy of four hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars and sixty-eight cents. A code enforcement re-levy of thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars and five cents, and a code administrative fee re-levy, re-levy of two hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty cents are necessary to enforce payment of previous year's water, sewer, code enforcement, and prorated tax items. And whereas the real property tax rate per a thousand dollars of taxable assessed value based on the above levies is estimated to be eleven point nine one one zero for city general purposes, eleven dollars and nine point nine one one zero cents, and one point three, three, five, three dollars for library purposes, subject to required changes included, including those for prior year's omitted taxes. Now therefore, it resolved that real property taxes and previous year's unpaid items, as ascertained and indicated above, are hereby levied upon the taxable real property located within the city of Oneonta. And further, that the mayor is hereby authorized to sign the finance director's warrant, commanding the collection of the same amounts by the finance director. Do I have a motion to approve?
No.
Got Katie, followed by Elaine. Discussion? Seeing no discussion?
No.
No, go ahead. Mike, is that you?
No, that's...
No, that's Lynn. Okay.
So what stands out the most for me is that our code administrative fee re-levy is over a quarter of a million dollars.
And that's not, that's a combination of two thousand twenty-three bills, two thousand twenty-four bills, and two thousand twenty-five bills that have not been paid.
Have not been paid. Okay. Okay. So I understand. I just thought that that's what we were projecting. Sorry. This is what people are saying.
One of these three levies are, they're for bills that were not paid by October thirty-first.
Oh, and we're moving it to the county?
Correct.
All right.
Further discussion? Done.
Question, so property tax rate will go up by what percentage points?
No, this is people that didn't pay their bills. We're trying to get their money, but it's gonna go to the county now. And the county's gonna make us hold it.
Well, no, this is the levy.
What's that?
This is the levy.
This is the levy.
The levy's going up six point three percent, and the tax rate's going up six point four five percent.
So, yeah, that's what we're voting on right now.
Yes, what you're voting on, what you're doing is you're adopting the tax levy for the city and for the library. That's what you're doing. And you're also approving the re-levis for the included bills.
All right. That's what I thought. Just trying to clarify that. Thank you.
Further discussion? All right, let's call the vote.
Councilmember Moser Campoli?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh Russo?
Aye.
Councilmember McHugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Lapari Shu?
Aye.
Councilmember Carson?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Forrester Rothberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Matheson?
No.
All right. Motion number eighteen, that the Common Council approves the following resolution. Federal Aviation Administration Airport Improvement Program Grant Application. Whereas the Federal Aviation Administration, FAA, has offered a grant for work to be completed at the Albert S. Nader Regional Airport. The project being described as the reconstruct terminal access road design. And whereas the city of Oneonta desires to advance the project by committing funds for the local match, funding shares being federal ninety-five percent, state two point five percent, and local two point five percent, now therefore be it resolved that the city of Oneonta Common Council hereby endorses and approves a project being described as the reconstruct terminal access road design for the amount not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars with a local amount of five thousand dollars. And it is further resolved that the city of Oneonta Common Council authorizes the funding of the local match for said project with five thousand dollars from the airport from the airport capital improvement projects reserve. And further resolved, the city of Oneonta Common Council authorizes a capital budget for said project not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars. And further resolved that all necessary budgets, budget amendments and transfers for said project are hereby authorized. And resolved that the city administrator is hereby authorized to execute all necessary agreements on behalf of the city of Oneonta with the FAA in connection with the project. And it is further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately. Do I have a motion to approve? I've got Lynn, followed by Elaine. Discussion? Shannon?
I need more clarity on these, because right now, how it stands, you know, we have people, we have citizens that continue to come out month after month after month, meeting after meeting after meeting to make sure that we are hearing them, right? So, something's not connecting with these projects and how we're doing them. So, I, I want to be very clear. So, when we say things like this is for a road, this is like strictly for a road and only for a road, nobody's property is being touched, we're not going on people's property. This is like, what we're describing, it's just, and we're also taking, you know, federal dollars. We're working out, like, send our lives to them away for twenty-some odd years. But I, you know, so, Kip Lynn, do you have, can somebody explain to me from airport, when we talk about this is for a road, it is just a road?
It's just for the road. Straight up for the road. It kind of changes the direction of the road and bring it around. That's it.
Okay.
Jenny?
I just wanted the council to know we've already received FFA money this year. So, so that is, and we will be receiving it again in twenty-six, just for continuing grants that we're, we're looking with. So, our twenty-year commitment continues.
I'm not excited.
That's how it felt.
Yeah. Scott?
What's, I know it's probably in the strategic plan or for the airport or whatever, but why are we moving the road from where it is?
So, the, the purpose, so the, the existing road itself is in need of reconstruction. Um, the purpose of relocating a part of it is to create more space. I'm not sure if anyone has printed out. Probably not, you only have the agendas. Um, but there is the map that was included with, uh, was shared with the Finance and Human Resources Committee. It shows the area that's being created. It offers more potential development in the future on the airport property for hangers, potentially. There aren't plans for those specifically now, but obviously, having hangers on property provides more opportunity for activity at the airport and.
And to be clear, uh, this is not, nothing to do with, uh, strategies for, uh, lengthening runways or, or extending the airport beyond its, its current, its current, um, physicality.
But to deepen that, like, does this then make, if we're taking FFA money, is the expectation that we are then going to continue on this path to then end up on people's private property?
This, this is.
Or this is just the, like, per project?
This is self-contained. That's right. That's correct.
That it's being.
Elaine?
No, that's all right. I'm sorry.
And just to be clear, this is the design phase of the project, construction phase, which would happen in the future grant application.
Katie?
I just, I know that the local match is so small, but I, when I think about this amount of money for the design phase and then what will end up being the reconstruction phase, I mean, that's the other thing to think about here, is this is self-contained for the design phase? So, our local amount is five thousand, but we don't know what the construction phase will cost, and we'll have a local match for that as well. Um, I just, you know, to spend this much money on the design of a road that is not within the city borders, when I have streets that have been, you know, that, that need reconstructing, I mean, I just, I just think about my neighborhood and how many people are not positively impacted by this. And I have a hard time committing funding to the reconstruction of a road that they will probably never use. I mean, I get it. I get the pitch. I get the whole thing. But, um, it's just, it's really, I, it's, I hesitate to put, put more money into this when I know, you know, when you weigh all the options. So, that's, I know, and also, I know that we generally will get, like, you know, chips and state touring route and things that will offset, um, streets within the city. Um, so, I don't know. Yeah, it's, it's, um, it's a hard sell for me, I think.
Good luck.
Yeah, a couple of things. Um, I just want to, I just want us, you know, everybody, you know, us as a council body and the public to remember that, um, you know, we have an obligation as airport managers to maintain the airport in a safe, um, way. Um, this is a project that has been identified by the FAA. It has been recommended by our, our airport commission. Um, and, you know, we did get plenty of information and attachments to familiarize ourselves with this project. Um, and the, oh, there was something else I was going to add onto that. But anyways, um, I just wanted to point out that, you know, we have obligations that, you know, we are, need to follow. Um, if I remember my other point, I'll bring it back up.
Okay. Shannon?
When you say phase, right, like, is, do any of those phases include people's private property?
No. This project would be, as shown on the map, it's all on existing airport property. So, this design that's in the next phase would be constructing the road on.
And that's with the. That's with this, the second one we're about to read as well.
Correct. Different project, but also on the airport property. Doesn't involve any.
Anybody's property.
Elaine?
Yeah. And I know this has been on our capital improvement plan. Um, the other thing I, I noted from reading these materials is that, did I see that in twenty-twenty-six, we can also secure a lower, um, percentage rate, because usually, I think it's five percent, but for twenty-twenty-six, we can get two point five percent. So, this really would be beneficial year to go for it, because we'd be spending about half of that. Um, and also recognizing, you know, if we do this later on, it's going to cost us more with inflation and everything.
Done.
I want your clarification. I know the airport commission is recommending this. Um, is the FAA also recommending this? I didn't, I never heard that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the FAA has approved this. They're, they're supportive of it. They actually asked us, they said at this point.
But it wasn't recommendation, you're just supporting it.
Right. I mean, they recommend, you know, proper maintenance of facilities.
Right. I got it. Thank you.
Well, yeah, it would make sense that they recommend proper maintenance. So, but you're, it wasn't a recommendation that we lengthen or.
That there's no lengthening.
Yeah. Or fix the road, like, it's just proper maintenance.
So, I mean, not to get into details, I, I refer to the airport commission to talk about that, which they've done in other meetings, but the airport layout plan is updated every so often, and that, that's like a master plan to the airport. This project's been on that. Um, it's something that the FAA has reviewed in detail with, um, art design engineer and has approved. It is something that they support. Uh, they don't make recommendations as to what to, to do at the airport, but they do, well, they, they do share their opinion on things. But ultimately, the, the city of Oneonta has proposed an airport layout plan, and the FAA has approved that, and this project is on it, as is the next.
Elaine?
Yeah, the other thing that we should remember from this, um, proposal is that by moving the access route, there's a future potential of economic development, and I know we're always looking for, you know, opportunities for increased revenue, um, economic development. And I know that hangar rentals were at least one of the items that were brought up that, you know, could be, um, obtained, you know, with, uh, this access route design.
Further? Scott?
Has there been any kind of environmental impact study about us doing all this?
Yeah, the environmental, uh, work has been done for this project.
And there's no issues with runoff?
No, that, and, you know, the specifics of that will be included in design, but there are no negative impacts, I don't think.
All right. If we have no further discussion, go to the ball.
Councilmember Moser Campoli?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh Russo?
Aye.
Councilmember McHugh?
It's just a road, right? Aye.
Councilmember Lepari Shu?
No.
Councilmember Carson?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington?
No.
Councilmember Forrester Rothberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Matheson?
Yes.
All right. Takes us to motion number nineteen. Motion that the common council approves the following resolution. Federal Aviation Administration Airport Improvement Grant Pre-Application Commitment. Whereas the Federal Aviation Administration, FAA, is considering offering a grant for work to be completed at the Albert S. Nada Regional Airport. The project being described as the construct taxiway phase one partial parallel TWRW twenty-four construction. And whereas the city of Oneonta desires to advance the project by completing the construction bidding phase to determine the total construction cost to be used in a future FAA Airport Improvement Program Grant Application with funding shares being federal ninety-five percent, state two point five percent, and local two point five percent. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city of Oneonta's common council hereby endorses and commits to proceeding with a twenty-twenty-six FAA Airport Improvement Program Grant Application with the project being described as the construct taxiway phase one partial parallel TWRW twenty-four construction with an estimated total project cost of six million six hundred thousand dollars with an estimated total match of one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. And it is further resolved that the city of Oneonta Common Council commits to providing the funding for the, of the local match for said project. And further resolved that the city of Oneonta Common Council authorizes an initial capital budget for said project to complete the construction bidding phase prior to submitting the future grant application not to exceed nineteen thousand four hundred dollars to be funded from the airport capital improvement projects reserve. And further resolved that all necessary budget, budgets, budget amendments and transfers for said project are hereby authorized. Resolved that the city administrator is hereby authorized to execute all necessary agreements on behalf of the city of Oneonta with the FAA in conduct, in con- connection with the project, and it is further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately. Do I have a motion to approve? I've got Elaine, followed by Lynn. Discussion? Mike?
I know that in July twenty-twenty-three, council didn't support, there was similar proposal that wasn't supported. I just wondered if someone who was on council that could. Did, do you remember?
This, this stems three years ago.
What?
This was, this was presented three years ago, different council. I don't know what happened in July or June.
July twenty-twenty-three?
Oh, yeah. So.
Like, what happened to that?
Similar to this is that there is not enough interest on council to invest in asset that has been there for sixty-plus years. So, the FAA has, I think Greg talked about it, um, reached out and said, you know, we're going to take out ninety-five percent of this project. This is an opportunity that if you look at the, um, graphics that was provided, you're, you're providing, uh, a parallel taxiway, only half of it. Um, this is something that was supposed to be in design in nineteen sixty-five. Why? I, I can't tell you. Um, it didn't happen. Um, but it came back up. I honestly don't remember how many years ago it came back up, but, um, we presented it three years ago. At that time, I believe it was four, six, maybe something like that. Somewhere in there. It was phase one and phase two combined. So, what's changed is that we now have a public and another, or another public entity and a private entity that wants to see development within the confines of the airport properties. So, Shannon, to your point, these projects are on airport property, city-owned property. And this is the thought process moving forward, is that, um, the county is partnering with the city to shoulder the costs. This cost will not be incurred in twenty-six. More likely, it'll be felt in twenty-seven. Reality is, at twenty-six, it'll go through the entire process and it won't come to fruition. In the meantime, our private partners and our other public partner have, um, stepped up to the plate. That's about as far as I'm willing to, to speak on their behalf. I don't know, mayor, if you can.
Yeah, I, I can add a bit to that. I just was, uh, on the phone with Ed Fraser, the chair of the, um, county board a little while ago. And, like, obviously, the county has added two members to our airport commission as we have revamped, uh, what the airport commission, um, was and how, um, how it is more representative of the interests of folks who are not necessarily, uh, city residents. But, you know, in fact, um, one of the members is the, um, is the board member from the town of Lawrence. Um, the county, uh, from our initial conversations, and, and, and there's been a through line, um, where their commitment, um, is to be a partner financially in this process, as Ed, to quote Ed, uh, from just a short conversation ago, a short time ago with our conversation. Um, the county will not be the leader, but the county will be a partner. Uh, and, uh, the expectation, uh, is reasonable that, um, uh, something along the lines of a third of our costs, as we are looking at them here, would be something that we count on the, the county for. So, um, they are, uh, partners that are willing to put, um, their money where their mouths are and, and also members on our commission. So, um, the evidence is there that, uh, from the, um, from the, um, public sphere, we have, um, you know, we have support that is significantly different, uh, than what we'd had a few years ago. Uh, and then there are, obviously, um, there's a private sector that has a significant interest in the success of the airport as well. How they wind up, um, you know, engaging with this is yet to be determined. Yes, Lynn?
So, I guess, Katie, I know that you don't share the, the interest in the, um, in the airport. So, what I was trying to do is take care of that financial number. I, I don't disagree with the streets analogy. I look at streets and sidewalks all the time also and go, wow, it'd be great to have the money to do that. Um, but the FAA is saying it's time now to do the parallel taxiway, to see this through fruition. And so, the financial commitment is, is there now on the new partnerships, so that that financial burden is relieved from, from the city taxpayers. So.
There's one more thing I just want to add before I go to Elaine, um, which is the rationale for, uh, the parallel taxiway is that you don't want to have two planes on the same runway, especially if one is coming in unexpectedly. You really do need to have the ability to be able to pull a plane off. Uh, so, go ahead, Elaine.
Yeah, so, it sounds like safety is, you know, continues to be paramount in these decisions that we're making regarding the airport. Um, but, uh, you know, I just want to point out, just like we have, you know, funds set aside for streets and improvements and stuff, uh, this is, this would be coming from the capital airport improvement project reserve. So, that's just, you know, I just want to point out the funding source there.
Shannon?
You said there's funders that are ready to cover the portion, so it doesn't affect the city?
Correct.
Secret people in a back room?
Potentially. Yeah, I'm not thrilled to death with the, uh, the way that, uh, has been presented. I would imagine that, uh, all of that will be transparent and presented to council if and when such, uh, monies are, 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 are offered, just to be clear. Yes, Katie?
I just wanted to point out that it was one or two meetings ago that we voted, I, I didn't, um, but that it was, it was decided that we would put fifty thousand dollars into the airport reserve from the, um, surplus from twenty-twenty-four. Um, so that was a conscious decision that was made by the council.
Cecilia?
I, I, I think, you know, that gets the, the fundamental question here, which is, as a council, are we going to move forward with having an airport in Oneonta, New York or not?
And.
And, and I think that's a question we might have to ask ourselves.
You might, you might ask, having an airport now, do we want to be safe?
Well, moving forward. So, we can have passive aggressive statements about, you know, voting and not voting for certain things uh, in terms of appropriating funds for the airport, but still, it gets the question directly, are we going to fund an airport in future projects or not?
Scott?
Um, I, if I remember right, twenty-twenty-three, I actually was supportive of this. It's a parallel taxi, and I'm still in passionate favor of it, it's a parallel taxi. A, because of safety, B, because of, you know, I get watching that series, Moments from Disaster, where, you know, one hits the other one. Um, and it's on, and I'm still in favor of this, and I'm willing to do this, but I think, I'm also agreeing with Cecilia, is we've never had the conversation as a council as a whole. Where do we want to see this go? We went into this new plan with the county, kind of ushered into it, um, heard it, I guess, more than caddled into it, and that didn't sit well with me, and still doesn't, on how we went through and did that. And I think we still have some unresolved issues, which statements that get made from people who are supposed to be representing us. And I, that, that doesn't sit well with me, but the difference between this one and the first one, is I don't think moving the road was a priority. This one, I think, is a priority. And that's why I'm going to vote in favor of this one.
Mike?
Um, you guys have made a lot of great points, and I've been struggling with this issue. Um, and I think part of the problem is that, was the communications issue, that we know that sort of, they're comfortable the way the airport commission and the airport staff communicated with neighbors. And so, I mean, these are a series of separate projects, and just because we're doing any one doesn't necessarily, if I understand correctly, mean that we need to do the other. Um, so, but if I, Greg or Lynn maybe can make sure I have this right, there's the road relocation. This is, we're talking about parallel, partial taxiway phase one. Sometime in the future, there's a parallel taxiway phase two, which would extend as the rest of the length of the runway.
To the end of the two-four, as it exists today, and no further.
Right. Which is separate from the question about off-airport obstruction. And I think when I attended the airport commission meeting, they put together, they put up this all together with the idea of airport expansion, and I think that made neighbors really nervous.
Sure.
But there's, building a taxiway does not necessarily mean that we are endorsing an expanded airport, right? We are making the current airport safer.
That's, that's correct.
Correct. We're staying within our existing footprint.
Right. And. And so, so I think your point is really good, do we want an airport or not? But we want an airport that functions, but we, I, I mean, I won't be on council to voice this opinion, but whenever it comes up in the years, in the future, I don't, I'm not convinced we need an expanded airport. And I know that there are a lot of concerns about that. But I do think if we have an airport, we want it to be functional. And Katie, I agree with your concern that I'd sort of rather spend the money somewhere else. But whenever the state or federal government is giving us ninety-seven percent of the cost, it kind of seems like it's worth it to put in our share, that we, that the overall benefit is is worth it.
Don?
My biggest concern right now regarding the airport is coming to an agreement with the neighbors regarding their trees. Now, I understand that this is a separate thing, but the idea is that the ball starts rolling downhill and, you know, one thing leads to another. So my preference would be that we do this at another time, that we reach an agreement with the neighbors. I think that's the most important thing, the most important issue facing the airport right now. So, you know, I voted for the roadway, moving the roadway, but this is a very difficult vote for me. I've been lobbying all around the issue. I would rather settle with the neighbors first.
Before I go to you, Mike, so, two things. One is, one of the concerns has been the conflation of so many different parts of the, you know, airport capital improvement plan and plans for expansion and all this other. And and the potential impact for the neighbors. One of the things I know you guys have watched is we've slowed that down so that we can get ourselves a clear understanding of how the neighbors' properties will be affected by way of drone mapping and and being able to say that these trees or this cluster of trees, you also recall that I pitched to this council on the other side of the budget, on the other side of my term, I hope and expect that we will look at our unrestricted reserves or some other funding source as a good neighbor fund to be replacing those trees that need to be replaced with trees that are more appropriate, so the property owners are involved in that and they maintain a level of connection to their property. All of those things, though, are, you know, you you look at the holistic picture, and that's good. But when we're looking at something like this, you're talking about something that should not be conflated with all of that other. The other thing is, so this is very specific, and it's very much a safety issue within the context of the property that is the Oneonta Airport. The other thing is the FAA was burned by the fact that they had offered us, the city, monies for the parallel taxiway a couple of years ago, and they presumed that the council was going to say sure because of the, you know, the size of the percentage that they were providing and the small nature of the match. And we said no. And when we said no, within their surprise, they also found that they had no place to move that money, and so it didn't go to anybody, which, yeah, so they're they're not happy, right? I mean, it was an embarrassment for them. So that's the that's the rationale for them wanting to know whether we're serious. They're saying there's an application yet to be to be made, right? They're not saying this is funded. They're saying, if you're going to make an application, are you are you serious about it? Basically, that's all they're saying.
And I understand all the questions.
And that's and that's why the tabling of it probably doesn't work.
I understand all of your points. And, but I think the priority should be, before we move ahead with these kind of things, is get a settlement with with our neighbors, with our property, with the local property owners around the airport. And there's no movement on that.
Yeah. Mike, and then I see multiple hands.
I have some questions for Greg about timelines. I'm looking at the the finance committee minutes here that were in our agenda, and it says that bidding on this would occur in March twenty twenty-six, which, and so I guess I'm wondering, what is the progress on, like, the LIDAR that we approved and the wetlands mapping that we approved? Were those able to take place in the fall before what you're setting?
I don't have an update on that. The airport commission may have more of an idea. I believe they were able to proceed with that, but I haven't seen any report back from them. As far as bidding in March, that's when we would bid, as the motion includes about twenty thousand dollars from Franklin Johnson to prepare those bid specs and planning documents. That would occur over the next couple of months. The FAA, with their request of the city to make what I'm calling a pre-commitment, you know, we would have another resolution in likely April to submit the grant application based on the construction bid pricing. This is a pre-commitment, this, based on what the mayor explained, they're looking for some sort of a indication from the city council that you are willing to go forward with the project in twenty twenty-six. And they have asked for that decision now so that they can plan appropriately with their twenty twenty-six programming. I think if the council were to wait on it, then the project would not have a chance of happening in twenty twenty-six.
Katie? Sorry, pardon my question. So, so we won't know, like, if the LIDAR hasn't happened, isn't happening already, we won't have that information until?
I believe it, I believe it was going to be underway. I just haven't heard an update.
It's it's been completed. We're just still waiting on the results for the LIDAR and the wetland survey.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So, thank you, Cecilia. You're totally right. The question is, do we want to have an airport or not? And Len can probably tell you that for every airport vote that comes up over the last six years, except one or two, I voted no. And I think that it's important that we talk about whether we want, and that's like a, that's not a passive aggressive thing, that's that's the record on it, and I think it's worth mentioning, because we should talk about it. But the problem is, the way that this works, right, is every couple of years or even over the course of a couple of years, we get new people in. And, you know, as Don noted, the ball rolls downhill, so projects become inevitable and they build on one another, and we have the reserve funds, and, you know, this feels like the next right thing. As Len mentioned, this won't happen until twenty twenty-seven. Many of us, is that right? No, we'll all still be here again, hopefully, but, I mean, by then, you know, it's, you you just sort of keep going. Everything builds on top of each other. So I just, I think that, yeah, for me, the the thing is, this isn't about having, like, a functional or safe airport, it's about making the decision that the airport that we have is adequate for what's happening. All of the, all of the reporting that has been given to me indicates that. And so it seems like everything we do is in service of expanding the airport. We, you know, we make the choice to put money into the airport reserve so that then, when we go to make decisions like this, it feels like we have the money. But that's a choice that we make that could have gone into the streets and sidewalks reserve. So that's why I bring it up, to say that, you know, we have, we have these opportunities to make these choices, to either fund the airport or not. And for me, you know, if it's not something that is a critical safety issue for operations exactly as they stand, it, I have not had a single person come forward, and if you're watching and you really, really care about the airport and you live in my ward, please reach out to me and let me know, because I have not had a single person come forward and say, please spend more money on the airport. And so, you know, for me, that's that's the point that I'm trying to make, is that we keep, but the nature of this is that we keep moving it forward with every decision that we're making. And at some point, I think we do have to decide, at least for ourselves, whether or not we want to continue to fund and expand the airport, because every time we fund it, we are expanding it.
Mike?
So, again, I just want to remind us that this was recommended by Airport Commission. It is a project that's about safety. That's been made very clear to us, you know, from the FAA, that this would increase the safety of the airport. I know that we've got some of these NOTAM notices that are out, you know, that affect how the airport can be used, and those have been placed on them because of safe, identified safety issues there that need to be corrected. And they are identified, they're in our capital improvement project, they're all things that we've seen throughout the budget process and throughout the year. And I just, as as far as public input, I also have not had people running up to me telling me this is what they really want, that they want the, you know, investment in the airport. However, when I sit down with people, you know, including at my ward meetings and things, and explain to folks, you know, what I've learned from the airport commission meetings, from reading, you know, hundreds of pages about the airport, and, you know, our discussions here in council, when I sit down and I really have those conversations with people, they really appreciate that, and they are, they have a greater understanding of why we're investing in the airport, and this idea that when, yes, when the airport was, you know, this was a decision that was made sixty years ago before any of us were on council, yet it is a decision that we are responsible for maintaining. We have, you know, very specific assurances that we have given every time that we, a grant is signed, and it does, it keeps us in perpetuity, in perpetuity, you know, tied to that airport. It is, whether we like it or not, part of our economy. We did get letters of support. We have several of them here from Justin Osterhaus, Rick Abbott of Cooperstown All-Star Village, Jeff Nye, FAA airline transport pilot and flight instructor, Richard Leffert, president and general manager of Seneca Flight Operations. So we have heard people speaking out in favor of the safety improvements here. And again, I just want to come back to, it's about safety. We have, you know, a fund that we have set up for this purpose, and we should be using it for these airport safety features.
Shannon?
So, you know, in line with Don and Katie and playoffs, some of what's been said, I have not had one single person from my board say that they're for anything to do with the airport. In fact, all of the communication has been concern for the citizens who surround the airport and wanting to make sure that they're being heard. I don't know that they are still, though. So, you know, I don't really care if the FAA is upset with us or embarrassed that we didn't use the money. It doesn't matter. I think moving forward, I want to be very, very clear beyond these two projects right now. I want to make sure that their needs are being met, they know where they stand. There is some clear agreement between them and us, that we know where we stand as a council, and we've sat and talked about and discussed where we'd like to see things move forward. You, you know, back, I mean, but like, I'm making so clear that these projects are just exactly what they say they are, right? But that's purposeful, and making sure that these people are protected, who make sure to keep us informed and be here, and, you know, I I just, again, want it on the table that beyond these, I would not feel comfortable moving forward on any airport votes until we have something in the works, right, where we're clearing up things between us and them.
Cecilia and Jenny?
So I just want to clarify that by my question around whether or not we as a council should decide about our commitment to future airport projects, what I'm really speaking to is pushing through what seems to be a series of ambivalent decisions, and ambivalence in general around this particular site for the city, and that we get clarity as a council, as a governing body, about whether or not this is a continued focus, both for our time and attention as well as, you know, seeking out future FAA grants. My argument would be that the infrastructure is in place. It is, it is an economic benefit to our area to have this particular site, and it is in our benefit to keep that site as as safe as possible. And if the federal government can provide those monies for safety, then it is incumbent upon us, it's our obligation, to make sure that that site is as safe as possible. So my my question is really about, if we are ambivalent, how do we move past that ambivalence to gain clarity?
Before I go to Jenny, so I will, before I go to you guys too. So in my conversations with the mayor-elect, one of the things I think should most likely be prioritized is a robust, and you've got a new mayor coming in, a new council member coming in, and a robust discussion that is supported by by facts. These are, this is where we are, this is where we'd like to be. These might be the plans, and that you can take them in sections and understand holistically all of it, and then determine whether or not that's something that the council supports. Let me go to Jenny.
I just wanted to share with council kind of what we talked about with DOT investing into the UPT Transit Hub. When you look at the state and federal governments, that they are willing to invest millions of dollars into the Oneonta area, I hope that helps your decision in knowing that if they're willing to invest millions of dollars into our area, that that means that they think it's a good investment. If they did, if they did not think it was a good investment, they would not offer us the grant money. And just to give you a stat, since two thousand sixteen, since Julie's hire, we have invested, she's got reports investing over a hundred million dollars into the Oneonta area for different things. That's huge. And so I just want you to know that the the expertise at the state and federal governments, they look at everything in such detail, they are deciding it's a good investment, not only to the Oneonta area, but for their agency themselves. So I just wanted to share that with you for, just to, for your consideration in the vote.
Thank you, Jenny. Michael, and then Don.
Am I right that the city is still planning to do a comprehensive plan update in twenty twenty-six?
Yes, we have a smart growth comprehensive plan grant, and that will be kicking off in twenty twenty-six.
And would the airport plans be part of the comprehensive plan?
That will be up to the comprehensive planning steering committee and everyone that contributes to that plan, I would imagine so. But we don't dictate that.
And then one other question about timing. So this is phase one of the taxiway. What's the timeline or thinking about phase two? Or is that, is there not a specific timeline?
The airport capital improvement plan, which is the FAA's document that they ultimately go by, is being updated, but based on our current, our current capital improvement plan, let me just check, I think that's in twenty-seven, but I don't know. Is it?
Yeah.
Twenty twenty-seven would be potentially the application for phase two, similar to twenty-six application being construction in twenty-seven, it would be twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Well, I would ask this council that if we approve this taxiway today, that we, kind of like what Shannon said, that that no further airport expansion be approved until it goes through the comprehensive planning process. So, because that's a chance for, to take the time to really weigh in, get feedback to different members of the community, and assess the economic benefits versus the ecological costs and the neighborhood costs. And obviously, we can't, we we don't want, like, we don't want the ball rolling downhill uncontrolled, but comprehensive plan will give us a framework to decide, do we want, like, I think we want an airport, yes. Do we want to expand the airport? Personally, I don't think it's a great idea. I don't think it, I don't think the cost, the benefits outweigh the costs, but I think a community discussion is what we need.
Don?
What I would like is assurance to the, that the city can give assurance to the neighbors, that they will, the city will negotiate, and the airport commission will negotiate in good faith with the outstanding issues. And by, you know, by voting for this, I I I think ultimately it's a good idea to have it function in the airport, because we've invested a lot of money, we can't shut it down, we owe the federal government more money than the latter city. But without having a deal, we're not even negotiating with the neighbors. That that's the problem on that. We have to, we have to work out a deal with that.
Scott, did you have something?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay.
No, I'm just.
You're all good.
Yeah.
All right. If there's no further discussion, let's go along.
Councilmember Moser Campoli?
Aye.
Councilmember Welsh Russo?
Aye.
Councilmember McHugh?
Aye.
Councilmember LaPari Shu?
No.
Councilmember Carson?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington?
Yeah.
Councilmember Forrester Rothbart?
Yes.
Councilmember Matheson?
No.
Okay. Moving on to motion number twenty, is that where I am? Yes. The common council authorizes the city administrator to execute a contract with Dear and Company, the New York State Contract PC six-nine-six-eight-three, for the purchase of two twenty twenty-five John Dear tractors with attachments, as presented in the amount of fifty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars and six cents. The common council further authorizes the funding of this purchase, plus an additional four thousand, three hundred dollars for the separate purchase. four thousand, three hundred dollars for the separate purchase of a salt spreader attachment for a total cost in the amount of fifty-seven thousand, five-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars and six cents, to be funded from the Highway Equipment Reserve and authorizes any necessary budget adjustments, including the elimination of the twenty-twenty-six appropriated reserves in the amount of fifty-two thousand, four hundred dollars. Do I have a motion to approve? I've got a lane pulled by Lynn. Discussion? Yes, Lynn.
So what was the purpose of this paper? Does this have the whole number on it? It's fifty-three?
That, that attachment is the quote for the tractor that includes some of the attachments. That's fifty-three, something, then you add on the four, three hundred. It's a separate quote that is from a different company. The reason I attach that is because it's listed the different attachments rather than spell out each of the attachments.
It was just visualization of the attachments?
Just, yeah. And I apologize, this didn't have a chance to go through the finance committee. Normally, we would bring this forward in January. We just approved the tentative budget, which included replacing these two tractors in twenty-twenty-six. One of them, sorry, one of them is a replacement, one of them is a new tractor. We currently have two, we will have three. But right now, we have one that is working. As of a couple days ago, one of them needs a new transmission. It doesn't make sense to invest money in that and we can go ahead with this purchase. So given these are being funded by the Highway Equipment Reserve and given the council committed to funding them in twenty-twenty-six, we're just asking to move that timeline up for these two, order them now, and we'll adjust the twenty-twenty-six budget accordingly. So we're not funding it twice.
Okay. Further discussion?
Mm-mm.
Don?
I would just like to clarify a question about, so this is explained, where the money is coming from now, it's, um, it's current, what we know, the future, like?
So this will be the, the current. It's, it's all coming from the Highway Equipment Reserve. So what we're saying now is in twenty-twenty-five, we're going to put money from the Highway Equipment Reserve toward these two purchases. We'll issue purchase order, they'll be delivered sometime next year, rather than issuing that purchase order in twenty-twenty-six. So we adjust the twenty-six budget down, adjust the twenty-five budget up.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. I was a little confused there.
You're welcome, yeah. It's not a normal motion.
Further discussion?
Councilmember Moser Campoli?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh Russo?
Yes.
Councilmember McHugh?
Aye.
Councilmember LaPari Shu?
Aye.
Councilmember Carson?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington?
No.
Councilmember Forrester Rothbart?
Yes.
Councilmember Matheson?
Yes.
Takes us to motion twenty-one, that the common council authorizes the mayor to send a letter to the William G. Palmeroy Foundation in support of the Greater O'neill Historical Society's funding application for a New York State historical marker for the Riverside Cemetery to be installed on city-owned property behind the Main Street sidewalk, next to the shared driveway entrance of the First Presbyterian Church and Riverside Cemetery. I have a motion to approve. That was Katie, followed by Elaine. Discussion? No discussion? Call to vote?
Councilmember Moser Campoli?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh Russo?
Yes.
Councilmember McHugh?
Aye.
Councilmember LaPari Shu?
Aye.
Councilmember Carson?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Forrester Rothbart?
Yes.
Councilmember Matheson?
Yes.
All right. Um, at this point, I'll ask if we have any additional business or anything for council consideration. Elaine?
Yeah, I just want us to, um, continue to keep in mind as we head into the holiday season, that, uh, food security for our neighbors, and I'm glad that you brought up that there will be, you know, a food drive at the parade on Saturday, but I know all of our local food pantries can use it. At least a couple of weeks ago, there were food pantries that were starting to run low on some of their supplies. So, um, you know, just rallying around, you know, our neighbors and our resources, you know, and, uh, you know, helping to make sure everybody has food on their table. So, thanks for keeping that in mind.
Sure. Katie, did you have something?
I did. Um, so I had sent out an email, um, about the transit hub to everyone on council, uh, a few days ago. Um, now that the buses have moved and, uh, we officially have an open transit hub, I wanted to see if the council would consider rededicating that space to John Insetta, who was completely integral for many decades in the, in OPT operations. Um, in two thousand ten, when he passed away, council passed a motion to recognize his service to the city by dedicating the Transportation Center, uh, in his name. And I know that means a lot, um, to his family to recognize his legacy, um, within our community. So, uh, I have a resolution ready to go, if folks would be interested.
Sure. So, uh, I just want to, uh, inform that we, we in fact do have a plaque, um, and we have laminated, um, I think it's the obituary or, or references the obituary of John Insetta. Uh, I think they're both, um, so here's the plaque. This is, uh, John Insetta Transportation Center, dedicated in his memory, September five, twenty-ten. That goes up in, um, the waiting area, which also the ticketing area. Um, and then there is a, um, then there's this, which is a laminated, um, you know, kind of description of John's life and career in, in the city. So both of those are ready to go. If they haven't already been put up, that's, the expectation is that they'll go right up and on. And so I think I can save this resolution because it's going to be done.
Um, it's a little different.
Is it? Okay.
Yeah. Um, whereas John Insetta served for over three decades and retired from the City of O'neill in two thousand eight, and whereas, following his death in two thousand ten, the common council dedicated the OPT bus station at one oh-four Main Street in his honor, and it has since been known as the John Insetta Transportation Center. And whereas, OPT operations have ceased at one oh-four Main Street and resumed at the newly constructed transit hub located at forty-seven Market Street. And whereas, the common council wishes to continue to honor the legacy of service and innumerable contributions to the City of O'neill made by Mr. Insetta. Now therefore be it resolved that the transit hub shall henceforth be known as the John Insetta Transit Center and that this name shall be featured prominently on the facade of the building and be it further resolved that this dedication shall remain in effect at future locations unless and until the common council takes action, action to change it. So move.
Wait a second. Uh, okay, I've got, uh, Scott followed by Lynn, so we've got a third, um, discussion?
Do we plan to put something on the facade of the building too?
Not on the facade, but on the exterior.
I'm just wondering, you know?
It says right now, Transit Hub, I think it says Transit Hub. Uh, Transit Center? Transit Center. It, whatever. It says, it says Transit Center. Uh, and then some research below it, I don't forget what it's, what it says, but.
Uh, well, on the backside, there's a trailway sign, you know, it says trailways, it says only on top of transit. I'd have to look again, but.
Yeah.
The sign is that it's to be installed, has been installed. If you drive by and look, you'll see what is going to be there, is there right now.
Yeah. Good.
So, I don't know how large of a font that you were looking for, but, um, have we done that with like the Ace Allison building?
Not the exterior, no.
Yeah.
Is there something?
I was just wondering if the floor we were on.
Yeah.
Is it? Oh, my gosh.
Yeah.
Never, for all the times I've been in.
So maybe staying aligned with that, or, I, I guess I was just thinking of, this is somewhat similar to the street signs that we went down that path for quite a while. Maybe we could have some similarity in facility recognition so that one family isn't put off that we didn't match the same size font. Distinction, we're, we're not trying to take away from anybody's service by someone having a larger or smaller.
Sure.
Yeah, there's the aesthetics of the building to be. Yes, Jenny?
Can we just give the, the council a little bit of history? Thank you. The original motion passed by council for the John Insetta Transit Center was supposed to be a plaque. It wasn't supposed to be the large sign out in front of the building, just so you know. That was a surprise to the mayor at the time. Um, it was just supposed to be a plaque inside the building.
It, I didn't get it.
Do we have the original resolution?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I looked it up. Um, actually, I think I have it, um, right here.
So just a quick question, Jenny. The council did not vote to have the name on the facade?
The, the large, the large sign that, that used to be on the OPT, that was not, I, I was standing right next to Dick Millen when he had, when they had the ceremony. He was shocked that that was there.
Uh-huh, such a prominent.
Yeah. That's where I agree. I just want to have some consistency there, you know, to make sure that everybody's been.
So.
It was on the building on Main Street. It said John Insetta Transportation Center. It was on that building and now it's no longer on the building.
Right.
So I'm just not sure, like.
So I wonder, I just want to, for the sake of interjecting something here, I wonder, um, to, to Lynn's point, um, I think this, when we were talking about Guards St. Way and things like that, went to, that, that was the planning commission, uh, committee and then became the clique, I believe, who went through all of that process, right? Um, and then there was a lot of discussion about uniformity, um, and, and, and I think there's real value in that. As it is right now, um, as I showed, uh, those who could see my screen, we have a plaque and we have, um, the, um, essentially, the, the biography of John Insetta going up in the, uh, in the waiting room, in the ticketing area. And it could very well be that, um, that there's a, I think there's real value frankly, in having that same sort of a process as the clique, uh, engaged in where there's a determination of what standardized, um, signs might look like, because there's likely to be more buildings built and more things.
We have the Brenner Building.
Yeah, so, so we have, so while on the one hand, um, you know, your resolution notwithstanding, we have, we do have this, um, this plaque going up and this, and this biography going up. It may make sense for there to be some time invested by the council, probably within the context of clique, to be determining what that uni, uh, kind of uniform, uh, presentation, uh, might look like, you know, so that, you know, those who are looking to, you know, future councils and, and mayors might, um, have some guidelines.
I, I don't disagree with that in principle. I think one distinction is that the street naming is like at the request of, uh, residents, whereas this is a continuation of something that had been voted on by council. And so it's a little bit different. I mean, I think the idea is good because I don't know that there's anything on the Brenner Building. Does the Brenner Building say something?
Yeah.
So I mean, I could see that. Um, you know, I guess if the, if the facade thing feels like an issue, um, I think the important thing is that we, um, nail down that it's to be referred to as the John Insetta Transit Center, um, s- just like we refer to it as the Brenner Building and sometimes it's Gate House, but generally not. Um, so, yeah, I mean, I suppose I could amend the resolution to take that part out if folks are uncomfortable with it. I think it's important that, um, that the city doesn't move on, um, in ways that are hurtful to, from the people who, you know, have given so much to the community. Um, I know for me, like, growing up here, um, John Insetta was one of the people, like, they, they will always be the city attorney to me, you know, when you give up on us and you like went to Florida or something. Um.
Don't hold your breath.
Uh, you know, and so, um, uh, I think those are the kind of things that connect us to a community that make life, a lifetime of service feel like it's worth something. Um, and I don't think that just because we put a new building up, we should, um, just forget about that. So that's where I'm coming from. And I, the plaque is great. The plaque was in the old, in the old building, um, but I just want to make sure that it's, like I said, it was on the front of, on Main Street of the OPT buil, OPT building for however many years. So I just think, you know, trying to, uh, yeah, replicate that. Um, and it doesn't have to be in giant neon letters. Uh, actually, I would prefer if it wasn't, if I get a second, because there's a lot of neon on Market Street in, in one district.
So again, probably that winds up being a clique conversation. So, um, further discussion on the motion?
So are you going to amend that?
So yeah, my question is if we take out the whereas about the facade, or, okay, that, that statement that this name shall be featured prominently on the facade of the building. Um, if there would be support for dedicating the building?
Elaine?
Yeah, I, I would, I support amending that just because then that would give us a chance to look at that uniformity piece.
Further discussion? I think we can call a vote.
Councilmember Moser Campoli?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh Russo?
Aye.
Councilmember McHugh?
Aye.
Councilmember LaPari Shu?
Aye.
Councilmember Carson?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Forrester Rothbart?
Yes.
Councilmember Matheson?
Yes.
All right. Um, anything else for council consideration? Any other business? Is there any rationale for an exec? Yes?
Sorry, I do want to say one thing. Um, as you guys know, I did not lose the, I did not win the election and I was upset about that, but I want to tell you that, um, I think Carolyn Marks would make a very dedicated colleague for you guys. And, um, I was honored when you guys voted unanimously to, uh, appoint me a year ago. Um, and I know Carolyn has made comments that have, uh, that people have disagreed with, but I encourage you all to give her a chance and, uh, build a seat now and work her hard and, uh, and I'll watch the sidelines.
Okay. Um, anything for, yes, Don?
Just back to the, uh, negotiating with the neighbors around the airport.
Yes.
Do we have someone who's supposed to do that?
So there, I'd like Greg to answer that, but there are, um, we have a couple of steps that we need to have realized. One is, what are we talking about? What trees are we talking about, right? So that's, that's going to come from, you know, the drone, uh, information. Um, apparently the drone, the drone, the drone has done its work. It just, uh, the data hasn't been compiled and, uh, in a fashion that could be shared. Uh, so there are a couple of different things probably that makes sense before, uh, those negotiations, um, continue. Uh, and Greg, maybe you can talk more about that process.
Yeah, I mean, as the mayor said, we're collecting that imagery. I think that should help inform, you know, give a visual sense of what exactly needs to happen. Um, Passero, our consultant, has sub consultants that do right-of-way acquisition. They do the whole process essentially for the city as far as the appraisal, surveys, you know, communications with homeowners. Um, you know, eventually, you know, it hasn't really been determined exactly who at the, from the city is going to sit down with them if that needs to happen. Um, so I think that's something we can have further discussion about.
Who would normally negotiate, I think, is it, there'll be individual contracts, I think, right?
Yeah, yeah, maybe we, individual easements.
Who would normally negotiate contracts?
Well, ultimately, the city will have to approve each individual easement, um, based on.
Well, it's supposed to be approval, but who negotiates the deal?
Hasn't happened before in my tenure with the airport. Previously, when we did it for a DOT project on, uh, Main Street, I had meetings along with the public works director, because that had to do with the culvert. Uh, so the relevant, you know, people who were talking about the project, we have a consultant in this case who's helping, just like we did then, uh, that does all the like work. And then we have meetings with them, go over maps, you know, what is the scope of the easement, what needs to happen and what will change and go from there. In those cases, they were simple. Uh, they were, they weren't contentious and we were able to accomplish the negotiations without a lot of back and forth, but it does take time no matter what. So.
Okay. Yes.
Just along those lines, I, having seen the Airport Commission struggles with communication, I would hope that maybe some council committee could take on sort of shepherding the process or overseeing the process of communication with the neighborhoods as the airport moves forward.
All right. Um, if there's anything further, Jenny, did you need?
I just want to confirm, when I developed the adopted budget, what I'm going to be doing, what we see is I'm going to reduce the appropriated fund balance contingency by twenty-five thousand. And then the, the, um, monies for the, uh, tractors is also going to be eliminated from the adopted budget. So you'll see that, the, so the appropriated reserves are also going to go down by, I think it was the fifty-two thousand, four hundred. And that, that will also be eliminated from the, uh, equipment schedule. So those are the four changes that you're going to see in the adopted budget.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jenny.
Um, no need for an executive session, I presume? Uh, and then, uh, that being the case, without objection.